Good evening. Welcome to Lamppoke City Council Meeting. This is Tuesday, August 22, 2017. It is 6:30 PM. If you have not done so yet, I would like to remind everyone to turn off your pagers, cell phones, or put them on a mute mode. We are reconvening from a closed session. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Vega?
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Osborne?
Here.
Mayor Pretend James Mosby?
Present.
Mayor Bob Lingle?
Here. Assistant City Attorney, could we have reported in closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to discuss the one item on the agenda of the conference with labor negotiators. Staff made a presentation to the council and the council had a discussion, but no reportable action was taken.
Okay, thank you. Everyone rise, remove your hats if you have it on, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Okay, oral communication. This is your opportunity to speak to us for up to three minutes on anything that can come before this council.
DeB Andrews, Mission Hills area of Lamppoke. I applaud the due diligence of the council and mayor during budget deliberations and particularly council members' comments, quote, "The portent of government is to maximize services distributed to our community and our citizens," close quote. As revealed in another councilman's graphs, the Lamppoke budget is up and revenue is down substantially. City staff 26-page response to council questions reveals city governance complexity and success of union wage negotiations to reduce our shrinking revenue. Citizen photos shared at the last city council meeting of the playing fields at Ryan Park destroyed by city crews tell a larger story. I know we have dedicated city employees, but the crew that ruined an area used by our young people deserve to be singled out. They not only wasted our money, they put health and well-being at risk as well as destruction of property. This is far more than budget deliberations. There are weeds in the curbs and neglected street landscaping facing empty storefronts. Does city personnel management work on behalf of our community and citizens, or have they abandoned attention to the details of services that most affect citizens? A herd of goats would have done a better job of cutting the grass on the playing fields at Ryan Park and not destroyed the grounds. California is the most poverty-stricken state in the nation. Lamppoke has a larger percentage of poor than Santa Barbara County, California, or the United States. Median income in Lamppoke is $47,000. However, the median home price in Lamppoke is over $350,000. I urge you to go back and adopt the 2013 to 15 budget and use this opportunity to peel back the layers of city government operations and determine how to get us on track to maximize services to the community and citizens of Lamppoke first. Eliminate rules and regulations unrelated to health and safety. Cut the proposed budget. Scale back to the 2013-15 budget, but not at the expense of citizen services. Goats versus the destruction of playing fields is just one example. The Ryan Park debacle is a vivid portrayal of citizens viewed as merely a revenue source instead of sovereign and deserving of respect and quality services. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Seeing none rise, we're going to close our communication and bring it back to the council. We have unfinished business. This is a continued discussion of the possible action of the 1719 biennial budget. Mr. Wyman Miller, do you want to kick us off?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, public. As you'll recall, it's a recap that the last session, we had delivered to you a response to the 12 questions that were posed to us and that we had taken some time to put together and we had delivered that back. You hadn't had an opportunity to review or absorb that, and so the time in the interim between then and now scheduling this was to give you all that opportunity to do that. We stand prepared to respond to any questions or clarification on the memo response that we had provided to you, or if you'd like, stand prepared to make a recommendation on a budget to you, either way.
Do we have any questions or comments on the 12 questions with answers? Councilmember Mosby?
Page 24.
24, okay, thanks.
My question is, we had personnel costs in here, but what are the other operational costs that are in the economic development division?
The expenditures that are in there are, were before it was brought to you. We did have a first round of reductions. The expenditures were initially $948,000. That was reduced by 51% during our first round and brought down to $492,000. We added another round of budget cuts, the request of council, bringing it down to another, to 64% reductions in there. I think professional services now are at $212,000.
You had no other costs in there? I mean, is that where the component was for the tax initiative?
So, under professional services, there is professional consulting services that could be used for ballot measures.
So, that $212 was potentially to be used for ballot measures?
Not the $12,000, approximately $200,000.
So, $200,000, okay. So, $200,000 for ballot measure. You said there was cuts in there, and maybe those, were those some of the items in the proposals? They were, when were those put forward?
There were two rounds. I think the first round was prior to you receiving the first proposed budget, and then the second round was after your request to come back with another set of options. So, the second round included the Business Improvement District, the Old Town Bid. It's listed as the bid.
So, those are no longer in?
In the $212,000, no, they are not.
But those are on top of that 200, in your proposed budget? Are those?
They were cut.
They were cut?
Well, if we decide to go with that, that was a recommendation that, that.
So, we have, but I mean, I'm just kidding, we haven't done any of that yet. I mean, it was a proposal that was put there, but nothing's been done yet, right?
Oh, we're waiting for.
Okay, I just.
Council to make decisions.
Did you say the first or second? I thought it was some.
Well, I'm just trying to clarify something because we did a, we did a round of cuts before you saw the budget of some $4.3 million in cuts to the general fund, for instance, before you saw between what was proposed and what we presented to you as a draft budget. That seems to get lost sometimes, but we did that. Then, based upon, at different times, based upon either your requests or your challenge to me to come back with a different, with a variation, we have done additional cuts. We have a current proposed budget before you that's balanced, and so I believe what she's responding to now is in our current proposal. I don't know if you're asking about the original draft budget, whether it's in there, and it was, or you're talking about our current proposal to you, in which case that's been cut out.
I mean, the 26 pages was referencing the draft proposal that was provided to us, the big book. That's what I was referencing with the 12 questions, so.
Couldn't tell from it.
We hadn't accepted anything else, so I didn't, so.
You hadn't accepted anything, period.
So, we have the $25,000 of human resource marketing campaign as well, right?
That is in a different division, yes.
What division is that one in?
That is under Community Relations, Public Information Office.
Okay. The bid for Old Town Professional Services, what is that in?
That's under Economic Development.
So, that's in here? That could be an answer to number 10?
That would be part of the operational costs that were in the budget previously.
Okay, so $75,000?
Correct.
And then, we had Economic Development Data Analysis was $40,000?
Yes.
Okay. And then we had the Internal Service, $10,000. What was that reduction?
That is, that was in Recreation.
And reduced special events for $3,000? What were those events?
That was also in Recreation, I believe.
And then, part-time hours?
Recreation.
Recreation. And the human service, again, the human service marketing campaign was in?
Community Relations, Public Information Office.
So, Ms. Calavan, thank you for your comments. Just for everyone's clarification, a lot of people, when they think of economic development, they think of just the amount of dollars you bring in in new businesses, but there's much more involved in economic development than just when a new business opens up. Am I correct?
Certainly, there is the components of not only recruitment of new businesses, but also expansion of existing businesses and business retention. There are numerous programs that can be, that are in place in order to be moving on all of those different areas in addition to recruitment, as well as creating and looking for different ways we can create new incentives, like we did with eliminating the water retrofit fee in Old Town, doing economic development loans. There are numerous other programs that we can put in place, including grant research to help with any infrastructure costs and new, other new programs, including working on with housing developers, and we have a collaborative group now working on infill incentive program. Workforce development is another important component, as well as community development, all adding to the quality of life.
Thank you. Why don't you go over that? Because people, when they ask about economic development, they think it's just a new business opening, but I think we all agree, I believe anyway, retaining an existing business is every bit as important as bringing in a new business, maybe even more important. So, thank you for that information.
Certainly.
Mr. Wyman Miller, just for our, reminding us again, would you go over, you've presented to us so far four draft budgets?
Correct.
Would you go over the most recent budget, just so we can clarify it in our mind?
Thank you. So, to recap, the recommendation I made was going back to do, in contrast with that original draft budget that you printed and handed to you, to cut an additional $1,363,000 out of that budget, because as councils expressed their concern, relying on the outcome of budget to balance the current proposed budget was not desirable, and I agree with that. So, our goal to bring about a balanced budget was to cut $1,363,000. The printed budget had also, had defunded a number of other outside local agencies, and council had indicated that they wanted the, that support restored of those outside agencies. And for each of those five, those are shown in their amounts, and so altogether, the goal was to come up with an additional $1866,000 in cuts. This was just a comparison we had done because there, we'd been asked to do an across-the-board four percent examination of four percent in cuts, and so this was showing how we could still do this and not have to phase out fire rescue, which would have been required under the four percent cuts. So, what all that was doing was bring out, moved Plan A to Plan B. We went back and moved Plan B into the Plan A position, which meant rather than having a contingency plan for what if the election didn't yield a positive vote from the voters, we weren't even dealing with that. We weren't relying for the purpose of balancing this budget. We are not relying on the outcome of that election. So, it balanced the 1719 without relying on a ballot measure revenue. It would restore the funding to the outside agencies and enables fire rescue to remain fully operational, and it buys time because I still strongly recommend a November 2018 ballot measure so that the people can decide whether or not they wish to have their services So, we can list, list through if you'd like to go through and see where all the additional But we had presented that and we're prepared to, in this case, it showed that all of that together left us with cuts in excess of a balanced budget of $4,677. We still stand behind that recommendation. If you're interested, one possible nuance would be, this is the same $4,677, we could hold back at 25% of the outside agency support, just hold on to that for a while, and wait for that November 18 ballot measure, and if the, since, you know, I would recommend citizens voting on their services, not only from the city, but from those outside agencies, then if it passes, we can go ahead and supply the last 25% of support for the outside agencies. If not, we're going to find ourselves in a situation with future budgets where we're going to have to make even bigger cuts than those that are currently proposed. So, that would put us in a net contribution to reserves pending that election of a positive And those, the various cuts that occurred were, some of those were some that we were talking about here out of economic development, some of them were coming out of other areas. That was where we talked about doing voluntary furloughs, moving, possibly closing City Hall on Fridays, doing other, other cutbacks. At no time, it's possible to do this and do this without it impacting anyone's job, causing someone to lose their employment. And as I've said before as well, when we're in that position, I think it's immoral and unethical to talk about people losing their jobs in that situation. The speaker that came up here during public comment was ill-advised as to what's going on with our revenues. Our revenues are not shrinking, they're not reducing. We're at all-time high on our general fund revenues. Our economic picture is solid and it's positive. There's a difference between economics and finances in this case because we have a sole financial issue sitting out there that we've all inherited, and that's the unfunded liability with the pension, employee pension fund. That doesn't, so the proposal that I made for a ballot measure was not to pay for those pensions, because we have to pay for those, that pension obligation whether or not we do any ballot measure. The ballot measure that I've recommended is for people to decide whether they'd like to do that funding via a radical reduction in service or only the moderate reductions that we have proposed. In all cases, we don't have the ability to cut costs and maintain services. Services will be cut with budget cuts unless we can, we can find this and pass this revenue source that we proposed. As a citizen myself, I would appreciate the ability to be able to decide on whether or not I want to support that, and again, I haven't, I haven't yet, I've yet to hear what the opposition is to it. I understand individuals being opposed to an increase in taxes. I don't understand an individual being opposed to a democratic election to decide whether or not we're going to have taxes.
Thank you. The reason I ask you to bring it up, last council meeting, Councilmember Mosby presented, reminded us of a couple of resolutions that were passed several years ago, and one of those resolutions had about 20 points that we are supposed to be guiding points for our budgeting, our finances, and in reviewing those 20 points, it looks like this budget addresses every single one of those. Would you comment on that?
I did go back and look at Resolution 5902, paragraph 14, and out of Section D, the 16 items of general principles, and yes, I found that the proposal I've made and that staff has put together has satisfied all 16 items. There have been other suggestions, including some things that have come from the council diocese that don't necessarily match up with these.
Okay.
And our budget, and it continues to not only match that particular resolution, but the council, the expressed priorities the council has made in the past, and I understand council's is perfectly, it's understandable and valid if, if city council wishes to change its policies and priorities, that's viable, but we could only go based on what had been expressed as, as those priorities and those policies.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosby?
Can you put the slide back up? It referenced overtime reduction, $200,000.
Down here.
Yes. Can you explain what that is?
Yeah, back when you had asked for an across-the-board 4% reduction, that we were examining at that point, that we were going to work, that we are going to have a phase-out of fire rescue, and because of that, that savings, as, as a two-man crew was reduced to one-man crew, the remaining one person for that period of time would become a floater and would be able to help in our overtime reduction, and so we are estimating the value of the accumulated overtime reduction as a result of the temporary phase-out in fire rescue.
So, that's, and your proposal up here is no longer on the table?
For my recommendation does not include that. At the same time, we are continuing, we are currently underway with examining overtime usage in fire. Chief and I are going to be getting together to review what the scheduling and what's going on and make sure, because we are outpacing again our overtime usage. So, as a separate matter, we are still going to be addressing that, but in terms of, this was a comparison of the 4% across-the-board exercise that you had requested to the printed version of the draft budget.
If we could go back to the 26 pages, the 12 questions, I saw that we had a significant downturn in our revenues coming in building, and you have some graphs representing that, page 22 of 26. Is there anything that you see that can, that can help us right now, because we're looking at roughly $350,000 a year in a shortfall in that, in that department?
It's ultimately a question, yes, there are things we can do. There's ultimately a question, though, of what you want your level of service to be in our responsiveness and turnaround time within, within the building department. So, our expenditures have been pretty steady because we maintain, we maintain staff in standing regardless of the level that's coming along. When we, when we had outsourced some of, as we have outsourced some of this, we've got some flexibility when we tried outsourcing all of our building contracting. We encountered problems that came back and hurt us more than they helped us. We weren't able to be totally flexible with the flow of work and income, because as private companies were dealing with that, they sought to have assurances of what their revenue stream was going to be, and basically, we're seeking a doubling of fees in a locked-in certain amount so that we could see that we could do that more cost-effectively with both internal services and then doing a hybrid approach using outside sources. So, yeah, we can, we continue to work on that. You're chasing a moving target with building because it shifts from season to season and year to year.
Okay.
We'd also point out that some of the revenues, that if we can make sure that we get the proper rates into place for building and that we don't not waive those fees, that that also will help our revenue model.
For understand there's a level of self-reporting on valuation?
Right.
How does that affect this?
Very good point. It affects us, I believe, dramatically. We, we need to adjust to some different approach to come up with valuation, the double checks, because right now, we do have a heavy emphasis, we have rates that are based upon project valuation as declared by the developer or contractor, and there are. And there have been times, the most striking difference I saw was about a one-to-seven ratio where what was declared was a one and what was actual was about seven times that amount. And so we are missing some revenue on that and we definitely need to change our approach and come up with either a way that we, it adjusts it upfront or that we can come back in the process and be able to do an adjustment if it's showing that the actual, the, the actual expenditures are a larger project than had originally been planned.
Are you aware how other cities do it?
Well, some have just set fees rather than, or will have a range, will have set fees based upon a range of project values. There are a number of different approaches.
But the valuation would still be self-reported. So when, and the county has a different, different schedule, they, they have an ability to do some appraisal, so they, they adjust accordingly. And I mean, they collect property tax, they understand. So maybe there's a little ability to true-up once the property tax statement has been out.
Right.
So I don't...
I think your point is that...
Because you're catching, you got, you got a big hole there.
Right. You're making an excellent point and it's well-taken.
Okay. If we could go to page 23, then on parks. One of those that is up there a little bit is the, the refuse, kind of the middle of the page, 1719, middle of the way down. You've got an increase in refuse. Is there something that's triggering that? Are we cutting trees down? Is that what that is? Or hauling trees away?
I'm, I'm not sure. I don't, I don't have the detail that backs up the computations in front of me. We can get back to you on that.
Mr. Mayor, that line item is only for the utility billing. So if somebody's taking trees to the landfill, that would be a tipping fee, that's not in that category. So I can check back with the utility accountant and see what made that change. And maybe both volume and the rates, looking at the last year, which is not complete yet. So we don't have...
They got a $20,000 increase from...
Right, yeah. So I, I need to go back and ask utility accounting where that, how that was derived. Most of the utility costs are based on formulas, based on last year's usage and this year's rates. So in general, that's how it works.
We still have a, a significant increase from 1315 on the total operating cost to the 1719, roughly $500,000 increase. Is there, you know, I caught the one in the pool in the 1517, that's what caught me off guard originally, that made my eyes open up. But what, what is making the, the significant bump up from the 1315 to the 1719 of, well, $450,000?
Well, if you look at the second line, the credits, salary and benefits utilities, that was a year where the Parks Division was providing services to wastewater, and that has since ceased. So that 175,000 credit was taken out. And that, that's half basically of that increase.
So the rest is kind of a natural movement of, of pay increases?
Both, both volume and rates.
Okay. And the transfer to Fund 68? What, what is that transfer? Is that the pool?
Mr. Albro confirms that's the pool.
That's correct, yeah.
That's the pool. Okay, transfer to Fund 61. You have, and what, what is the format of recre-, what are we doing with recreation?
Recreation revolving fund is a separate, we track it as an enterprise fund, but it's really used on all the activities of recreation that are fee-based. And in the schedule, that was part of the proposed fee changes that was done back in May of, or February of 2014. One of the recommendations then was that it's great to keep track of the fee-based programs, but recreation is, if combined with the recreation that's in the general fund, is really a general fund activity. So this is the recognition that any money that's generated under Fund 61 in excess of their costs goes back to the general fund. And if there's any costs that are not covered by the fees, it's backfilled by the general fund. So the last couple, last budget cycle, the rec, the budget presumed about some dollar amount going back to the general fund from basically surpluses that were generated by fees. And part of the reason for that is a lot of the non-fee-based programs of recreation are in the general fund program, 17,000, for instance, senior programs. So the fees that are based on programs that are generating fees, to some extent, those are being used to offset the non-fee programs that are within the general fund. So it's, it's a back and forth. And to put in kind of perspective, when I first got here, the Recreation Fund had borrowed about $135,000 from the general fund over time. And since I came here, it's been able to pay that off. And so it's been able to generate, not a big number, but enough to provide that support.
Okay. If we can go to page 14 of 26. Primarily, you know, right about the cell phones, but we have $180,000 in cellphone expenses. Is there, is there a less expensive type of phone that we can get out there? It seems a, I mean, or do we have the two, I know a lot of the vehicles have the two-way radios out there, but we have phones and radios. Are we redundant? Can we...
We could reduce them, but sometimes it's, it's not a true redundancy because the problem with the radios is the radios are, can be listened into by anybody. And there are times that the confidential, you want to preserve the confidentiality of whatever's being communicated between one and the other. But there was a time when we didn't have those, so...
Well, just, I'm just wondering, I mean, whether we went to the simple flip phone or whether, you know, what, what the level of the phone is that, or the service we're providing or, it was a little open-ended on that, what, what we're doing, but we had $180,000 in phone expenses.
Well, that's a, it can also be a tool, is you use like smartphones for things like if you're, you know, I mean, we can continue to develop applications that help us actually do our work out in the field. It's really, I guess, a choice of whether you want to, you know, continue to modernize and develop or, or not. But I'm not saying one's, you know, I mean, it's, it's all fair game. But there are a lot of applications, ultimately, we'd like to have, to have an interactive so that an individual who's working out in the field, for instance, can do some, can do controls from a, a phone, be able to get information, GIS information about particular lines they're working on, be able to know locations, ages, materials, flows and things like that, but...
Well, I'm just thinking, I mean, we're, we're, you know, at a time in our budget, is there, if there was an audit done, whether we could figure out whether there could be a savings done on that. I, I realize the advantages of phones, like a lot of times I have three phones with me, so I'm well aware of that, but I was just...
Yeah.
A question.
It's, for me, it's probably not the first place I'd look because it's not looking that far out of, out of whack when I quickly go, well, I realize not every employee has a cellphone assigned, but real quickly as I'm looking at it going, if, if they did, anyway, had 400 phones and we're spending about, what, $48 a month per phone or something like that? I have to do the math, but maybe around, I guess maybe around $40 a month per phone on cell phones, which isn't particularly an outrageous number. So then it becomes a question of whether you want to have that level of tool in the hands of your workforce or not.
Okay. Well, if anybody else has any other questions on...
Councilman Vega? One of my questions, I'd like to address the council. I'd like us to be clear in, in our direction here. I see that we're making forward motion, kind of, sorta, but I'd like us to see us making a little bit more forward motion here. So I think what Patrick has, has said here is I'd like to at least ask the council, in our questioning here for the budget, because are, are we changing our priorities at all in order to assist what we're doing here? Okay? And I guess it's just a question, guys, okay? It was, it was put out here, if our budget priorities have changed, I think that he's done an outreach here to, to ask, hey, how do we change them if we're changing the number and the order that we want things? I think that's probably what has tied his hands to a point with the proposals of AMB. I think the other part of it is, I think that I'd like to make a, maybe a little bit out of line here, but I'd like to make some sort of a recommendation that we, actually moving forward as we do the budget, that we actually agendize for the future, actually amending the general plan to flow with any budget concerns or anything that we're moving forward, okay? I think part of our budget priority list has, has a growth element to it, that I don't believe after looking at the 2030 general plan that it's going to be adaptable once we make changes here. It looks like here we have some restrictions on housing, we have market rate housing incentives, we have other incentives that, that call for growth, and I think that we need to take another look to make sure that our general plan reflects that growth because we now, for our agendas, we have in the future here, we have here movement with the Bailey Corridor and beyond. If you take a look at the general plan, it's kind of conflicting and it's almost not fair to say, hey, if one element says, hey, we're not going to move forward, and one says, we're going to move forward. I think that probably we need to take a look at that. We, we, it may not have any connection, but recently we had a, a developer come in for a Woodstone project. I'm not sure if all of you recall. It was for affordable housing, rental housing. The council voted, I pretty much, I think unanimously, not to let that move forward. Recently, I've just been contacted by people, this, this, okay, that as presented, it's not, it's not the way it was presented that it's turned out today. So what's happened here is the state overrode the council's ruling and allowed these tax credits to be used for affordable rental housing. I think sustainability in law book is so important here that if we can't pay our bills, why are we allowing more of it when we already have our fair share as far as the county? So recently, I just got a call this morning, and I've heard from several other people that the people that came in here and actually advocated for the movement of that affordable rental housing are actually the ones that are being asked to leave now, okay? They're there and actually they're accepting Section 8 vouchers, it's low cost. I just got a call this morning from a landlord that said, hey, do you know anything about the Woodstone project? Are they going toward being an affordable rental housing? Well, I said yes, okay? So basically what she said, we had a single mother with three kids, it doesn't qualify anymore there. So kind of looking forward, we're wondering if our general plan is being used against us, is one of my questions. It may not be, but obviously the state overrode the council's ruling, and I think that our growth element in our general plan, if it's saying, hey, we're going to advocate for more general, for more low-income housing, and here we have a sustainability issue and we can't, you know, we really can't raise the fees because of some of the fixed income and, and the retirement community here, so what do we do moving forward? So I just wanted to bring that up. I hope I'm, it's a little bit out of line, but I think it's gonna, in the future, you're going to see the benefit of it. I guess part of what I'm saying is I, again, it's a long-winded way of saying I'd like to agendize the general plan. Rental housing prices are at an all-time high, rental housing vacancies are at an all-time low, and is continuing to drive up cost of the rents. The governor of California has stated the construction of new housing should be a priority in an attempt to provide more housing to meet the current demand. Many long-term residents will be priced out of the rental market if more housing is not built to meet the increasing demand. There are numerous California Assembly and Senate bills presently being considered to help address the housing shortage, but many will be detrimental to the city unless the city makes a planned effort to address housing independently from state mandates, which the state mandates would come in here and possibly could override what we have. For approximately eight years, there's been an organized effort by forces outside and within this community to stop the further development of housing and jobs. The result has had a catastrophic impact on this community, community by resulting in the above cited issues, which is affordability. So a little long-winded way of, of council request to say that in the future here, because I think it's going to be really tied to our budget concerns, that we make sure that our general plan also goes with our growth element.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Mosby?
You know, if I can, but in analyzing, as we're chewing through the budget, I went back and looked at some of the past meetings that councils had, and I noticed that actually our, what we're looking to do is minimal compared to what you had to do, the mayor, back in '09, and they had a $5 million shortfall at that time. And so I, I looked at it and I kind of put together a piece of paper that, that modeled a little bit after some of the movements that the council moved back in 2009. And you guys were able to get through it and I, so I kind of put together a little homework sheet that I used that maybe can help, help us to find our way through it, also looking at the, the 26 pages that are put in front of us, along with some of the other items that we had. We had, we had three other proposed budgets along with our draft budget, and maybe we could go down, you know, one, one at a time on here. And it's, it's kind of a sheet that I put through. Some of the numbers I just got tonight, was, was asking for them, but they were unable to give them to me till tonight, so I'm glad those came out because they're, they'll help us to get these. I made 15 copies, I don't know if I made enough for everybody, but anyhow, if you look at number one, the reduced fuel budget of $210,000, and I would think that, that was presented to us and, you know, thanks to the price of fuels down and, and an overestimation or such, we're looking at $210,000. I think that everybody can pretty much agree, that's a, that's kind of a no-brainer to put in there to get towards our, I think about $1,006,000 is what we're, we're needing to The next one, two, three, four, five, six items are items that were as well, were offered up to us a couple of times in, in the, these other, other budgets that came through, which was eliminate human resource campaign, 25 grand, eliminate bid for Old Town Professional Services, 75,000, eliminate economic data analysis, 40,000, reduce internal services of 10,000, reduce special events, 3,000, reduce part-time hours of 6,000. Now, it sounds like some of those might not all be able to, the lower ones, the 6,000 might not be an option anymore. But the, the sales tax initiative, when I gather there, there's a, that's a 200,000, so I could fill in that, that blank there of 200,000. And the, I don't, did that include the cost to the county of $30,000 to $90,000? Was that in that 200,000 as well?
Yes.
Okay, so that was included. And as we heard, the overtime reduction in fire department staffing, it doesn't look to me like the $200,000 number is not on the table anymore because we're not going to, we're not talking about getting rid of the, the phase-out of the fire rescue, but there is a number there. Do, do you have a number that maybe is achievable?
I prefer to have my, my discussions with... I prefer to have my discussions with interim chief Bray and subsequent, and our command staff before I opine on that.
Sure. The next was the fire marshal position, that was one of the questions in the 26th page, and that's kind of an open-ended number of seeing what it is. Again, this isn't eliminating the fire marshal position, this is putting it back kind of how we had it. I noticed in '01, '03, the council, in the budget, reading the budget, but from there, they wanted to move it out and to bring it, make it a fourth battalion chief position, that was something that they felt they couldn't afford. There was a couple other times through the budgets, that move was tried and attempted, and it wasn't. We stepped out and did it, I believe, what, mid-year, 1315 budget, we did it. But aligned back in there, you're looking at a 92 to $362,000, a year saving, or a budget cycle savings, depending on how much of the revenues were continued. I know we had Stan Hart for a number of years, acted as a V C and did the fire marshal position, and there's been several other ways that it's been operated that way. And again, what my methodology is doing here is looking back at past budget books, going back some, almost 20 years, and to see movements, thought process, and see probably one of the most pivotal times when the city really had something in front of them with a $5 million deficit, some of the movements they had done. Again, general fund positions that we brought in in 1517 budget, we believed we could afford them. I mean, as per our 16 policies, everything's to be on the table, and of course, when we eliminated, if we were to eliminate a position, we would do everything possible to make sure that one of the other vacant positions that city has. Recently, I think we had 32 vacant positions in city, I don't know how many have been filled, I think that was about a month ago, Mr. Wilkie? You had told that, you had said that?
That's approximately the number, yeah.
And we average about 30 a year, so I mean, we, you know, these positions, if we did choose to eliminate some of the positions, we would do everything possible, just as we stayed here in the 16 points in the resolution, to work with staff, to reposition them, retrain them, and get them into another one. I think that's, you know, and I believe in 1517 budget, if we knew what this was coming around and we saw, with our crystal ball, we wouldn't have brought them in. Likewise, so that was $440,000 in savings. There is a question that I found in the budget book, and it was a very difficult one to track down, and we had one, I guess it was mid-cycle, last budget cycle. That's why it wasn't brought forward in the questions, because I asked what came forward in the budget, and this position came for us, I guess, mid-cycle. So that's why it wasn't analyzed, I didn't say the budget cycle and mid-cycle, and so I'm not sure if that one's fully CDBG funded, or if it's 50/50, or...
It currently is 50/50, so CDBG and then storm water, so it was funded by cost of service, so not general fund.
Okay, because you had, it's on the city website, 50% planning, 50% CDBG, so that's no cost to general fund then, that position?
Right, and now the storm water is part of utilities, so that component is not...
So is this the same one that we were looking at, that we're not looking at anymore, that was going to go to the water department? Or was that another one additional?
We had additional position that we eliminated.
Okay, so this will then now be funded underwater, this one itself here, or what's the movement going to be?
The 50% that is storm water would be funded from utilities, and the other 50% would be CDBG.
Okay. The other thing, and, you know, I don't want to look like I'm an ogre in opposition to what's going on, you know, with the library. It, and again, I think we would have been maybe taken a different position if we had known when we brought on the library that we were in this position. But in 2009, they motioned and made a movement to actually reduce the funding from the previous year's cycle by 10%. And in the 26 pages of analysis was looking at just freezing that number at the 1517 level and not increasing. And we, I'd actually made an error, and there was actually close, over $600,000 that we'd increased in our funding of that from what we did. So that's a significant amount of money onto the general fund that we've increased in our funding to the library. And so my question was posed, just to hold that there, we'd already jumped up so much more, and it was a big hit on the general fund, not asking to reduce what we're doing with the current funding, but to not increase it in this budget cycle. And that would be a $207,000 savings. The next one comes up, again, with the cellphone, I heard some conversation, it was the first time I really saw that we had a $180,000 phone bill. Granted, that's over two years, but in a cycle where we are trying to look at everything, and as per the resolution, I don't know if they're, yes?
If I may, that 180 is for the whole entire city, so equating that to general fund savings, I think is, a lot of those cellphones are in utilities.
Right, and again, that's why I have that outside the category, because I have zero underneath the line, because I'm not sure, you know, 0 to 180. I don't, didn't tabulate it in there. Likewise, we had some equity adjustments that you had passed out a couple meetings back, that you had listed up, you had two pages of those items, and that was over a two-year movement. And again, I think, I think it's, I understand the need for it, and as we discussed, Mr. Wilkie, that we have approximately $540,000 a year coming in of revenues, of existing revenues that can be applied to positions. And I would say that those things come first on the line, shall there be money come forward? But I would say we postpone those equity adjustments, and if I remember right, not all of them, as I was going through. Looks like to me that maybe one of them was more CDBG than general fund, I'm not sure of the mechanism completely on it. We did have general fund there. Well, again, I would think it would be advisable that we postpone the advancement of these equity adjustments, and like I say, maybe put them first on the list that we get, when we get down there, should we have some revenues? Hopefully, Hilden Garden Inn does better than we anticipate. But we do have a lot of other commitments as well that are lined up. But again, my suggestion would be that, when totaling those up, there, and again, I have zero in the column, but up to $140,000 for those equity adjustments, I don't know what, it's difficult to track all the funding mechanisms in there. I've tried to go back three or four cost allocation books to try to see, I've got a lot of in my head, way too much. But it looks to me that most of those are in there, there might be one $20,000 adjustment, which, that's a 25% increase in a job in one cycle, I think maybe, let's hold off. So, you know, if we could move that 140 back into that side, and again, you'd have to come back to tell them, you know, what we have. The other one is a difficult item, and in analyzing the code enforcement, and code enforcement, from the analysis that came forward, it was originally funded by outside sources, CDBG and RDA were the main funding mechanisms for that, so it didn't affect the general fund. And from I gather, little by little, as RDA went away, and then CDBG modified its funding allowance, or what you were allowed to fund with that, it became a big general fund component. And again, an item of importance, and I realize, looking back at council priorities in the past, how important code enforcement was on there. I did make a council request to analyze the past two years, closed cases, to see what was there. I don't know if everybody else, there was a 167-page email that came across on there and stuff. Now, if there's a way that we could do a tone-down, modified, until we get more revenues in to cover this, and what I'm trying to do here, of course, is to keep off of public safety, and without doing the minimal, minimalist of most of approach or touching their revenues, but, you know, you're looking at $375,000 in the code enforcement. Building Department, what can we, again, I asked on that, we're looking at, you know, it's a million-dollar situation, not all of that is negative. We have about 350, $300,000 a year, so about $600,000 that we're hurting on right there. Hopefully, the trend changes, we can't pass this budget on hope, I understand. But if there's another mechanism, we did talk about here tonight, the valuation aspect that could significantly, and I don't have those papers in front of me, I'm not privileged to be able to see that and analyze it. I know in outside agencies, they are good at truing up and making sure, and whether, you know, it's a calculation by square footage, because you do a random analysis, and you have them post up this much, and they get a refund at the end, and you could use the property tax valuations that come through, because they're pretty good at that. They know when you're, you know, doing what, and they'll bump you, you know, it's a few hundred dollars they don't, but if you're doing a few thousand, the county will do that. So maybe there's a mechanism that we can get closer to, and you can come back to find out how much we could save there. Because we have a $600,000, $700,000 budget cycle, and that's, you know, almost a third of what we're looking for in our deficit is right there in that department right now. And it brings down, you know, I talked about the non-departmental, you're going to get back to me, it doesn't look like there's a lot there. It can be trimmed up, but maybe we can look at some of the utility estimates, why, you know, we have a $20,000 increase in refuse, and a couple others that seem a little bit higher. The swimming pools up, is there, was there a reason, is that because of energy costs going up, or? I heard we're putting VFDs on some of the pumps in there, which could help significantly, but you're looking, you've got a, you know, is there 10 or 20 or 30,000? I know at one time, there was talk, and I'm not, don't want to get everybody nervous about that, but there was the talk of reducing hours of opening of the pool to save revenues. We have a, what's it, $448,000 in the budget cycle, or is that, that's annual, isn't it, Mr. Wilkie?
It's two years.
So it's 448,000 over two years in the pool. So it was 420 in 1315, and I thought our revenues were actually going up, and did our trend change?
Well, it was closed for renovation, so that's going to affect revenues, because it's basically a fixed cost facility, and every hour is not open is revenue we're not receiving.
But that would have been for the 1517 cycle, right? Would that affect the 1719 cycle? We're not anticipating closures?
Well, I'm talking, yeah, I'm talking about 1517, because it's, the beginning number is where they're at, so...
I used 1315, number was 420.
Yeah. And that's just, the 1315 number is based on the study that, where the YMCA said they could do that for $210,000 a year without paying for the operations of the building, so that's why it was...
I was just looking at the 26 pages, that's where that 420 came from?
Right, but that, that's the, kind of, the background of where the 210 per year came from.
Well, what if we, what if we say we wanted to fund $50,000 less to the pool there, would that affect general fund, or? We say we're going to only give you 400,000, not 448?
It would be backfilled by the general fund, yeah.
Okay, all right. And then that brings to the, you know, the last two items on the, that I had there, one was a general fund fleet page, I think most people, I think everybody got this in their mailbox, and this was, you know, down to $3.8 million for fleet replacements, and I'm aware that it's important to stay on top of this. And I, in reading Santa Maria's budget book, they have a chart that advances out, advances backwards, which is very educational to see. And I don't know, it might be something we want, might want to, because it's good to forewarn the people of what we got. But we have, we're only looking at $474,000 of general fund fleet replacements, and I agree that it's, you know, I'm talking with Mr. Wilkie, and then talking to Fleet, and talking to the chief, and just seeing where we had. It's important to stay up on that, because we don't want to get behind the, like we did with trash trucks, we got behind a little bit. But we're down quite a few police officers right now, and are we, the number that you're using to calculate, for the, there's four Crown Victorias that we had that we're looking at replacing, and what I'm asking is, because we're down so many officers, is that something that we really need to replace right now, or is it something we can hold for a budget cycle?
If I may answer that, there's two things in there that I'd like to respond to. The $470,000 that's in there for the general fund, I don't have that sheet in front of me, but a big chunk of them are for streets and urban forestry. Streets and urban forestry, if you recall, has a $388,000, not cap, but obligation of the general fund. Anything above that would be funded by Measure A, gas tax, the new taxes that were published by the state. So that's not, that is in the general fund, because streets and urban forestry are part of the general fund, but their funding source is primarily from outside the general fund. So that gets down to basically the four squads, and I think a park vehicle. And I caused this problem. The reason I caused this problem is that, in looking at the fleet, because they are getting older, I use those four squads, not necessarily to say we're replacing those four squads, but to say that there will likely be some sort of failure in the fleet of the general fund. We need some amount of funding to pay for those replacements, if those vehicles should have been replaced five years from now. So it's really like an insurance for the general fund in total. I put the, I suggested to Fleet to put those four in there, because if we happen to have a biggie truck running at two squads tomorrow, we have to replace those. So they're one of the highest priorities, so I just chose those to put in the budget as a placeholder. But it's really, since we're self-insured, this is really, from the point of view of insurance, kind of like a deductible. Just a minimal amount to make sure that we can put tires on the road for things that are very necessary. Fleet, over the last eight years, has done a great job of looking at vehicles that don't necessarily have to be replaced. That's a double-edged sword, because we now have a significant number of general fund smaller vehicles that are years past their replacement cycle, but they're still operating, they still are within the level of operational maintenance that doesn't say we have to get rid of them. So they're doing a great job of maintaining those, but we also have created a backlog that we are, that we are looking to try to find a way to get out of. And that's generally why that $5 million is in the original number, even though that wasn't used to calculate the amounts that each of the individual funds are paying into, so.
So the general fund vehicles are programmed into the budget at the, I hear what you say on the insurance aspect, I got you that. But are those programmed into the budget number, into the...
That dollar amount is programmed into charges throughout the general fund, because that, they, the general fund is one basket. So each of the divisions that have replacement vehicles has a share of that. So if we're replacing a $25,000 car this year that's under schedule, some amount's coming from fire, some's coming from police, some's coming from parks, recreation, all the other divisions that have a share of the replacement fleet.
Okay, and getting down to the last one, which was the department head salary increase, and I saw the calculation and tried to analyze, and I guess I didn't, I didn't ask my question completely directly, and so it's probably my fault, because I didn't have it processed exactly how, what I was looking at to get at the question, but what I had... But what I had analyzed, and when I looked at the numbers, was I was looking at, as you've asked me to do before, was the Transparent California website. And so those are the numbers I were looking at. Granted, in your case, the city administrators here before you, and, you know, when you came in, it was a different deal, it was a contract. And so that number, if you went back in there, would be skewed, because it would be a different person in the position.
Right. I just wanted to make, just a qualifying statement about Transparent California, it's a private website. We're not sure of all of its, you know, I think mostly, probably, it gets fairly accurate. It's not accurate to a T. You don't know, for instance, if someone's taken a portion of their salary and put it into a 457 deferred compensation plan, it doesn't show up. Just, or they might feed in different things that they'd call income. That having been said, I still can't make hide nor hair of the numbers being reported for me, they just.
No, and you had referenced to me before, when I asked about a question about something that you said you can check out the salary ranges in Transparent California, so I.
Yeah, we did, like, we did that on that, that one, just to show that the average, you know, taking all the salaries that are in there, the average salary for Lompoc is less than that of any of the other central coast cities, based upon Transparent California.
Right. And I had gone back and kind of answered the question where I thought I was asking it, but I guess I wasn't asking the question right. And coming up with a number of approximately, in the, not counting years, because of the computation with years is different, but calculating the other positions that were in the 26 pages, you, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, the seven positions there, compared to the IBEW raises and stuff, those were about $156,000 more than the computation if they had been with the IBEW union raise.
But again, like, if somebody sells back their leave time, because they're maxed out and they're able to sell some leave time, it's going to show that as income, but it's not, that's not their rate of pay.
And that's what I'm qualifying as well. I just went with the mechanism that I had to operate with.
So, but selling their leave time is no different than selling their car, other than when they sell their leave time, it shows up and gets included in Transparent California.
Right. And that's, again, like I said, that was the number that I had to use. I guess, you know, I'm learning, I need, you know, the question that I ask, you know, I'm going to ask it a little tighter next time.
Well, I thought, I thought we had, I thought you were tight on your question, I thought we were tight on our answer, basically. If, what I understood your question to be was, taking each and every one of the department head positions and my position, what did we, what is actually going on with the rate of pay? What is that salary in actuality, in reality? And what would it have been if they had the advances they would have received as members of the IBEW? And I thought you were very succinct in your question, and we tried to be succinct in that answer. And it might not align at all with Transparent California, because again, they add things in or take things out that are not relevant to the rate of pay.
Right. And again, what I was saying, because the day that you, and I don't, you know, it would have been nice to see the homework on there, that, you know, it's kind of, there wasn't a lot of homework on that question, on that answer that you guys gave, just kind of said it didn't have an increase.
If you all want to see the math, you can certainly see the math.
Okay. And likewise, too, the date started at June, not January, so it was actually six months into 2014 as well. So some.
Well, and that's the other thing, because we operate on, so for instance, when we went on 27 pay periods, within a calendar year, I needed to take a reduction in place, pace, so my total pay didn't exceed my contracted amount. And so those are some of the ways that things differ sometimes, based on what we have going on with a calendar year versus our fiscal year. Normally, we're pulling fiscal year numbers, but again, we can show you the math.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might just respond to some of the information, I appreciate the suggestions offered by Councilmember Mosby. Those that started the list, I think we're comfortable with, because they look pretty familiar as being things we've offered before, as he pointed out. As to the overall, the overtime reduction in fire department at this point, we had a plan on how we can do that, if indeed rescue is being eliminated. I think we're in agreement that we are not eliminating rescue, but I'll still, and so that's why I'm hesitant to commit to any number right now. But I will be meeting with Chief Bray and the command staff as we continue to tackle overtime overall as an issue, and to address other organizational issues. Fire marshal position, want to hold off making comments on that right now. I have some strong beliefs about our need for a fire marshal and to do, to be carrying out those duties in the form of inspections and fire prevention, you know, really exercising our fire prevention. When we have a battalion chief that is also serving as fire marshal, something's got to give at that point. We're either losing direct command over some troops, or we're going too light on our fire marshal program. We've invested quite a bit in our fire marshal to develop her skills in being a fire marshal. It's paying off in the community, I believe. But again, I'm not dismissing the idea of realignments and reallocations, I'm just saying, I think it's real important that we, we have the discussion with the command staff within, with Chief Bray and the command staff within fire, to make sure that we're keeping touch with reality on what we want to accomplish. Just, again, making a statement about eliminating general fund positions added in the 1517 budget, I believe we can avoid eliminating positions that are currently filled. I believe that to my heart, and the recommendation I've made has other cost savings that are not listed on here that enable us to avoid that. The library funding, and going back to the 1517 budget, we point out, we've had some fantastic, we tried to provide for you the list of the fantastic accomplishments and growth and expansion that's gone on. And I know one of the areas of concern, I think all of you have addressed at one time, is how do we improve, the need for jobs, and one of the ways we improve our job capacity, our job training with the public, is through education. And one of the ways we help with education is to enter a time, lifetime of learning early on. And I just believe the library plays a critical role in that regard. And so I see that as a bit of a false economy, as you take money away, you have ripple effects in the community that ultimately cost you a lot more than any nominal amount you may be saving here. I had already spoken about the 180,000 in cell phones. The only way I know how to make, I don't advocate making code enforcement a profitable business. That is, I don't advocate we go around, start citing and finding people. But I do advocate that we have a robust program that takes people that are out of compliance with the municipal code, that are breaking the law, and that we bring them into compliance and we help with that. We can also, we've got volunteer organizations standing ready to help people who can't help themselves to improve their properties. And I'm a big advocate of that. And ultimately, that's a pretty modest amount to help secure and protect our property values. I'm invested here, as all of you are, here within the city, in terms of property. The one thing I can do that to most protect my property value is to care for my property. And the second biggest impact on my property value is how well my neighbor takes care of their property. So for me, I value having a code enforcement program that's robust within the community, and ultimately helping protect millions of dollars in values. Building Department, as I said, I think excellent recommendations for examination, particularly around valuation. I appreciate Member Mosby's highlighting that, and we will definitely be beyond that to bring about improvements, so that we can be matching our revenue streams with our costs. And the non-departmental savings, as we had said, we would go and we'll look at the utility costs and the like. I just wanted to get on the record with all of those. What they, some of those things where we, where I would be recommending, if we not step forward, we can certainly replace those savings with other savings that have been recommended within the recommendations that I had made. And including with things, I know we haven't had much more discussion about it, about things like voluntary furloughs, or moving to 980 schedules that expand our hours of service Monday through Thursday, but have City Hall closed on alternating Fridays. Thank you.
Mr. Wyman, I just want to add a little bit to that, going back to the library. There was also, when we made that switch, there was an issue with liability. We had liability that we did not, were unable to control prior to that. And that, there's a cost to that and a value to that, when we made that switch. The other thing about the library, we all, we talk about it, we realize it, that we are a poor community. And I don't know how often you go to the library. I go there quite frequently. That place is packed, and it's usually, now, school's back in, but it's filled with kids. After school, it almost looks like a daycare center for our children. But they have a safe place to go, they're entertained. The value of our library right now, I mean, I wish we could put more money into it. Look at, if you take a look at, and if, just everyone take a look at, again, at page 12 of 26. Since we've made the changes, look at the increases in every single thing, in circulation, 21%. Summer reading program participation, 142%. Let's see, actual visitors up 39%. Program attendance up 32%. Computer usage, 68%. Now, computer usage, I don't think the five of us, the six of us, seven of us, go to the library to use the computers. I think we all have laptops, we have desktops. This computer usage going up 68% from maybe high school kids that doing their homework, that don't have computers at home, again, our poor community. I believe it's being used often by maybe homeless people that are looking for jobs, or maybe not even homeless people, just the average person, looking for a job, doing some research, maybe writing a resume on it. That's assumption. Wifi usage, again, poor community, people that cannot afford wifi, they go to our library, use free wifi. So you talk about adding value, lifestyle, to our community. I can't think of a department that, well, there's many departments, but the library is definitely a department that increases our life value to our residents right here. So I would hate to see us take anything away from our library. I agree with the city manager on the code enforcement. I think we, if anything, we should probably be doing more. I truly believe, in addition to preserving our property values and that of our neighbors, this is my personal belief, I have nothing to prove it, but my, my personal belief is one of the reasons we are not seeing developers build here is because, one of the reasons is because of the appearance of our community. We recently, about a year ago, we passed a ordinance on shopping carts. You go up and down the street, we still have shopping carts all up and down the street. We have an ordinance against parking motorhomes and vacant vehicles and unhitched trailers for more than 72 hours. We chose not to beef that up a little bit, but you go up and down our streets and you see motorhomes, trailers, abandoned vehicles, up and down our streets. And all motorhomes and vehicles, all they have to do is move them one inch. And so code enforcement, I believe, not only preserves the value of our properties and that of our neighbors, but it also, if we would be stricter on it, I believe we would see developer, my belief, is we'd see developers coming here and building more homes. See, Councilmember Starbuck, you're next.
All right. Transparent California, I agree, is a private website, if anybody's very interested in looking at what city employees are actually paid. Council meeting May 16, 2017, we adopted Resolution 6118, parentheses, 17, which is the master pay schedule for CalPERS retirement system. It's a 23-page document, it is available for public, and it lists every employee's actual wages. So that's the guiding document here. I'm just going to make a couple of statements on this budget. We have been on it a long time. I didn't get much out of the 26-page response personally to balance this budget. The enterprise reimbursement, I notice, is included in this budget, but it's not been an approved enterprise reimbursement. So is it approved? Is it legal? Is it defensible? I don't know. Page 129, 147, and 151 of this budget show approximately $21 million transferred into this budget. A lot of money. If it is not legal, it would be reimbursed back to these enterprise funds through the general fund. This is something that I'm having a big concern with. I don't want to get into it tonight, but I wanted to put it out there. I cannot understand why we are so dead set, when we do these across-the-board cuts, that the first thing we do is go to the outside agencies. They also provide a service, and not internally. We have yet to do anything internally to cut ourselves. We're not leading by a good example here. In a basic synopsis, more employees, more pension obligation. Part of our issue is pension obligations down in the next 30 years. You know, public services, public assets cut, private, I don't know, there's got to be a balanced truck. What do we do in a year if a ballot measure fails? We're going to be in the same position we're in now, but probably worse. We should be doing right now, with the anticipation of the ballot measure failing. If it passed, if it goes on the ballot, it would be good, it would be easier for the city. But if it doesn't, what are we doing? We're delaying the conversation we should be having right now a year. So I don't know. I think what we should do is look at this and just say, the easiest thing to do is across-the-board cuts in City Hall. We've already made the case for outside agencies we support, what the taxpayers want, what they pay for, so I mean, let's stay on that path.
Councilmember Mosby?
Yeah, if I could get back with the city manager's question of putting some of the components back in, and if you put the, don't use the overtime reduction in fire department. Don't do anything with the fire marshal position, don't get any savings there. But you'll still, you know, do the first 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, the first eight, and then you come down and you do the eliminating general fund positions added in 1517 budget. And if, we're not talking about cutting the library funding, we're keeping it at its existing funding. So you do that at 207, and if you did the equity, held off the equity adjustments and code enforcement, that would give you $1.7 million. So you said there's potentially some other items that you thought were out there, or is that, is that something that you've presented to us before?
Right, yeah.
Which ones were you thinking, I mean?
Well, like, like the voluntary furloughs.
And how, do, 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 what was the, how much was the voluntary furlough, was that two? How much was the voluntary furlough? Do you have something that recognizes? I mean, you got signed contracts. Do you, do you have something that recognizes, I mean, you got signed contracts or what did you, how do you get people to commit to them?
Yeah, we did an estimation based upon a 1% savings, thinking, well, if they, if they were to take out, if, if the average person that wanted to do that was going to lose, like, take a week off, whether one continuous week or cumulatively, and we had half the people do that, that would be about 1%. We also counted on compelling people that were not in 24/7 operations of taking the week off, of closing down on all non-24/7 essential operations, the Christmas to New Year's week and doing that both years of the budget cycle. And we'd have savings here for, in essence, shutting City Hall down for that. And closing on alternating Fridays, closing the building also has some savings through some utility savings and the like. And so we did a, we, we did an estimation based upon what the, what the participation would be in, in voluntary furloughs based upon some initial feedback we were getting from people.
Now, do you, do you have that separated between voluntary furlough and the City Hall closure? Because I'm not necessarily for the City Hall closure, but have you had, do you have that component separated?
Yeah, well, the, the point, I, I believe, yes, we do, but I, I just need to make a qualifying statement that I think part of our anticipation was that closure was to help facilitate people taking the voluntary furloughs. In other words, that they would take time off on, on the live Friday, if you will, the open Friday. And we were going to try to create that as a magnet day, if you will, for when people would, would take those.
And that was a closure every other Friday, you were saying?
Yeah, nor, as an ongoing thing, we could set up a 980 schedule and be closed on alternating Fridays. If during this coming year, we wanted to help accelerate the frequency of using voluntary furloughs, we could also move that to actual, every Friday, but it's an alternating Friday would be the plan.
And, okay, so, do you have a way of coming up with that component tonight or is that something that would take time?
I think we'd already computed it, but I'd have to go back in the stack of various things to find out.
And what?
Yeah, I think it was around 200,000.
Well, yeah, you've got, you've got 241,163, City Hall closure and furloughs. But what, how does that divide up? What is the savings by closing City Hall every other Friday versus just the furlough?
Give me just a minute. We had about 18,000 in utility savings, that would be the shutdown part, and the rest was in voluntary furlough, so in labor savings here, there, and everywhere.
So roughly 220,000 in the voluntary furlough, which, which had come back, you know, I mean, you, you say the economic development, or the code enforcement is your, so if we could find another 155,000, it'd keep you to that same funding. Is there a way that, do you have something else that you, that you see on the list? I mean, I'm, I'm trying to get to a number, what?
I appreciate it, I appreciate.
1.68 is what we're looking at or something, was, what do we?
I, I believe it was 1.866 is where we were targeting. And if you don't mind, if this is a good time for a break, we've been going about an hour and a half, if this is a good time for a break, maybe in about 10 minutes I could have, have the numbers for you.
Maybe before we do that, if there's another one that you, on the list that you see that is something you think that maybe you could analyze more than just one thing during the break. Is there something else that you?
Well, I, I was going to use the break to find the piece of paper that already has what I computed.
Right. If, if I might, one other item that had been done in the past in 2009 was in the planning department and currently, right now, with our planning at the level we are, and I understand we have one of those positions open right now, it's one of the two positions that were recently filled. If there was the ability to postpone that position as well.
Right.
I didn't compute that number in here.
In all cases with, with positions being held vacant, our approach is to maximize that. We realize we, there are certain positions, because we're already into freezing some positions already, that's, that's something we've already got underway. But we don't outright, outright freezing positions is a blind approach, it's not managing the budget. So what we do is, what we would be willing to do is to commit to a payroll savings, a salary savings for the cumulative amount of positions we hold. But we have to constantly move those to have the, to optimize our services to the public and minimize the adverse impacts for when vacancies occur. So we ultimately get to where there's a dollar total that's fulfilled by the aggregate amount of savings. But you, you do that not by freezing X number of positions for X number of time, but rather by continually examining and can you continue to keep a, a position vacant and open.
Well, it gives you a bigger pool to pull from, there's no doubt, and more flexibility as economy moves or changes you a certain direction. I, I got, what I'm doing is looking back is what was done in 2009 and some of the movements they did there, so that's why I was looking at that as planning slowed down to a level, that was something that they held those positions vacant during the budget cycle. So that's, that's why I'm referencing those.
Yeah, I understand, but, and in that particular time, the, the entire economy, including particularly the building industry, was coming to a screeching halt. We are working actively right now with developers. We expect there's going to be a lot of activity. Now, I realize not all of that's, again, planning, planning division needed, a lot of their work's done, but actually what, what our hope of hopes is, is that we do have ultimately a demand to have those services and to move them forward and get them filled up, because that means we're developing revenue that's going to more than offset that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, yeah, we'll get back. Mr. Weimiller, go ahead and take off. What we're going to do, before we take a break, Councilor Vega had made a request, a proposed council request, and Councilor Mosby, you didn't do it intentionally, but you started into a questioning, he never, we never gave you a, even discussed a second and a third, so.
Thank you, Mr.
I want you to repeat your request.
I'd like to agendize the, gosh, hold on. Anyway, for the, I'd like to go look at the 2030 general plan, I'd like to agendize it for the future here so that we can go back and, we can do this four times a year, I believe, to do any amendments that we deem necessary, and I think it would follow what we're, the direction we're going to as far as growth. And to make sure that it doesn't happen again, where the general plan is used against us in our forward motion. So anyway, that's what my, what I'm requesting.
No, I'll give you a second. I was involved in the initial and there was a couple of things that need to be changed in it, so I'll second it.
Can we have a third?
I'll third.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to take about a 10-minute break.[1145.78]
So, real quickly, kind of on the fly here, going over, comparing the list. Reduced fuel. There. So, it wasn't clear, were you all wanting to avoid the voluntary furloughs and closure for right now? Or is that...
Myself, I would be okay with the voluntary furloughs, but the $18,000 for the closure, I think you might actually hurt City Hall a little bit more without people coming in here spending money, so.
Thank you.
I'd like to see, myself personally.
Okay, so...
City Manager, but without the closure, your voluntary furloughs, that projection is no longer accurate because you were relying on some of that time for the voluntary furloughs. Is that correct?
Right, but I'm trying to do a workaround and possibly see, well, can we get to our target number without the furloughs? And then if we choose to proceed with them, it's that much more money saved.
Okay.
So, just give me just a moment. I do, one of the things that we had proposed, and I know it's a minor amount, is $6,000 for reallocating Barkin Park cost to the foundation. Is there an issue? My understanding was that was the original plan. And I don't know how it got shifted to being Parks Maintenance Responsibility, but...
Well, that is correct. All the, those parks were supposed to be maintained by the volunteers.
Well, so, assuming for the moment, though, we're not talking about that, there's a potential of about 12,000 there for Parks Division for Barkin Park and elimination of multi-trail, the multipurpose trails, some maintenance on those. The North County, I'd reported to you before, the Executive Director of the North County Rate Crisis Center had reduced $4,845 in terms of the amount that they were going to be billing. So between those three things, we're about 17,000. And it seems to me, if what you're looking for is a commitment, oh, well, there's the $93,000 that I proposed eliminating of money that we were paying to the Long Poke Unified School District.
I have a comment on that. I don't know what it would cost, but if we decide to eliminate the crossing guards, I would recommend, there'd be some charge for it. At the intersections where we currently have the crossing guards, we put four-way stops. And if people have ever traveled Parisima Road out by the County Fire and Sheriff's Department, that stop sign has red lights going around and they kind of circle, it's almost impossible to miss that stop sign. So, my proposal would be if we choose to eliminate the crossing, you've got a big smile on your face, you like that stop sign, I guess, is that we put four-way stops there. I mean, I think it would be...
If it doesn't meet warrants, I really, you could end up causing more harm and problems than it would be.
Well, that's something I think I'd at least like us to consider, so...
We'll handle that as a separate topic.
Okay, sounds good.
If I can.
Can I just ask a question about the crossing guards? I passed some information off to Engineering, I don't know if, for grant potentials for crossing guards? Do you know if Mr. Luther had a chance to look into any of that? Not yet? Okay, sorry about that.
But overall, it sounds like if we take the things you've listed, which are, and we work through those, what are we short? Is your math the same as mine, about 170, 175,000? If, if we didn't take advantage of the 93, then we're still about 170, 175,000 short. If what you're looking for is a commitment to make sure that somewhere, including and starting with examination on the building division, that we'll deliver that much in savings, then yes, we're prepared to commit to that.
To 175?
And part and parcel with that is, that if, I understand your intent, that if we're eliminating any or defunding any positions, what we're doing is we're finding alternate positions for those people to work.
And I believe that's what our policy, the 16-point policy says.
Yeah, that we're going to take in the welfare of the employees in consideration.
I'm just doing some quick math here. Too quick.
On the radio, this is called dead time, by the way. And this is, this is on the radio.
That would get us at 1.75. And that's, and that's with not having the 18,000 for the closure of City Hall, but that, and that also puts everything back into code enforcement.
We'll float the voluntary furloughs then.
But that would do, that's including of the voluntary furlough. That puts about 220 in the voluntary furlough. You had 175 in building. That was suspending the equity adjustments at 140 there. But that's 1.75. If you gave me two police cars, we'd be pretty close to being there. Or something.
Maybe someone else has a...
I don't want, when we eliminate any fleet vehicles, we're going to have problems, I believe. Even though they're not part of the general fund, you know, we looked at the problem we're having with the trash trucks. Just recently, we're eliminating some of our bus routes because of the deferment on some of the buses. So, I'd be against eliminating any of the vehicles at this point.
Again, so...
We get, we get the max, we try to get the maximum life out of every single one of our vehicles, and sometimes we extend it way beyond the time, so I'd be against that.
Again, what I'm looking at is, with 1.75 right here, and we need 1.86 to balance, so I need 110. We could, on 110, I'd, we could get close to something. Granted, not everybody's approved of everything in here. But I, what I was, again, my homework sheet, I appreciate the City Manager getting, but if there's another 110 that somebody can find somewhere, we can maybe move forward with a movement that they could draw up a design, and maybe at the next meeting, we could bring it back to finalize or have another computation. So, I don't know if there's... Yet, you potentially had some non-departmental. Was looking at something in the non-departmental section? I don't know if... Did we have anything in Parks? That Parks, maybe Mr. McKinnon had something that he could hold off for two years in the Parks budget.
I know, we're, Parks are getting, looking pretty rough. We've been running shorthanded, and we really...
I hear you.
And we're hearing plenty from the public with their dissatisfaction and state of affairs.
I did hear some excitement from the public on the gopher traps in Ryan Park, so I want to give the kudos to whoever's doing that, and I did hear thumbs up on there, somebody was very excited about that.
Perhaps some of these other...
Okay, we can go to Councilman Starbuck.
Real quick, Mr. Wyman, and part of this cut here, again, we've listed city-supported, privately-run events. What are we including in that that we are going to defund for the public?
Well, right now, I don't believe that's on the table.
It's what?
That's not on the table with Mr. Mosby's proposal. It was with mine, not with his.
Councilman Rossmann.
I'll have to say, in my first, well, what are we going on now, eight months into my term, this is more than I ever thought I'd ever know about a city budget, so thank you for the education. I appreciate all the questions that are being asked. I'm appreciating that we're digging deep into better understanding how complicated a city budget is, because it's very complicated. It's not a normal budget that you'd have for your household. It's not even a budget I've seen in any of the corporations I've worked for. So, I have a newfound respect for staff, for all of the things that you manage and juggle with the different funding mechanisms and how we do that. I also want to say thank you to those departments that came forward in the original alternate Plan A with sacrifices you're already willing to make. And I think that we need to go back to that plan. And let me run through a scenario, because I have allowed fellow council members to run through several scenarios that keep digging deeper and deeper and deeper into our personnel. And we are beginning to see the fallout in morale, we're beginning to see the fallout in actual jobs being vacated, because why wait to be fired? If the dogma from the dais is saying we're going to fire, I wouldn't wait either, but I really don't think that we need to go there. I'd like to go back to the alternate Plan A, and let me run through a couple of scenarios that I have proposed before, but let's talk about them again. Instead of giving the chamber a full year, give them one year. Take 108,000 and put it towards those city-supported privately-run events, so those could continue, because the chamber has value. And they run Old Town Market, which was very successful this year. But I also know that the city underwrites some of executing Old Town Market, some of Flower Festival, some of the parade, some of the Christmas parade, and so we need to make sure all of those continue to happen in partnership. I think we take the C3H contract down to one year, and we eliminate the human service support, and we eat into that excess dollars of 4,600, and suddenly you have one year for crossing guards for LUSD. If we do that, that gives us time to put the one cent sales tax on the ballot. I'm not your parent. You elected me here to make hard decisions, and I'm willing to make those. But if all the things I'm hearing about the issues with the parks, the issues with not having equipment, the inability to pave some of the streets that we need to pave at a better level than we're currently budgeting for, deferred maintenance is the last thing I want to keep doing, because that sets us up for even more of an impact long-term. So if the community wants to evaluate what a one-cent sales tax would do and how that would help us do some of these additional things, then I think they should have the opportunity to have that direct vote, because that is the one time that we don't get to make that decision for you, is to take it to the ballot. If the community says, no, I'm not going to pay you anymore, don't really want these services, don't want you to improve our services, don't want to see you support any of these things, then we know exactly how deep we're going to have to cut, if not further, because this is a one-time cut that's not going to just reset us, because we'll get a new bill that's even bigger, and what are we going to do next time? Cut even deeper into staffing? So, I'm very grateful that my fellow council members think that maybe they made some mistakes in judgment when they increased our employment, hired the individuals we needed to execute on some of the priorities, and don't see the value in what is beginning to happen there, because we do have increase in sales tax, we do have increase in TOT. So some things are beginning to move forward. So, again, I realize that none of us have the perfect solution. I realize that none of us want a tax, nobody wants to fire anyone, all hard decisions. I still prefer going back to that alternate Plan A, making a few adjustments for a year, putting the sales tax on the ballot, and letting you, every one of the residents and voters, tell me what you want, rather than me listening to just those of you who've been able to send me an email, make a phone call, or appear here. And I don't think it's our responsibility to be your parent on this decision, because this affects your household every day. So, I'd like to go back and consider that, and I appreciate the ideas that have been put forward by Councilmember Mosby. I think those absolutely do need to be looked at. I think they could be applied after we accept a budget based on alternate Plan A. Go back and look at all of these things. If one of those solutions absolutely can be put in place, and that money can be brought back to the budget, and something else, given the additional funding that we've cut for that one year, all right. But to continually drag it out one more meeting for one more budget design is unfair to our community, and it's unfair to our staff, and it's unfair to those outside our community who are looking to partner with us, because they don't know where we're going to stand. They don't know if we're going to have the building and the planning department we need. We're about to meet next week to talk about moving forward on cannabis ordinance. I definitely want my fire marshal in place for those. I definitely want my code enforcement staff there. I definitely want my building and planning at full staff to deal with a new cannabis ordinance. So I'm not happy looking at cutting any of those things. And I want the Economic and Community Development Department there to help manage those businesses that are interested in coming to town related to cannabis and ordinance. And if I don't have those personnel there to be available at the front desk, then it's a failure on our part to deliver on implementing that ordinance. So, I'd like some consideration to the alternative of making a few adjustments to the alternative Plan A, that's painful to everyone. Continue to look at some of the points that Councilmember Mosby has made as potential to bring funding back, and move on tonight, rather than continually pushing this down the road.
Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to make, thank Councilman Mosby for all the work he's doing, but I would like to make this comment here. I'm a little concerned that after cutting all this up, we're back here, and the City Manager has put down a proposal that we're working on now that was previously proposed. So what I'm going to ask is, I'm all for an alternative Plan C, but I think we need to fast-forward here and kind of come up with a directive, so that we can know exactly what we're doing and which direction we're going, because I think we're, it's turning into a little single-handed negotiation here. And I'm all for looking at the alternatives without the tax measures, without penalizing the community, the private entities, and the nonprofits. I think that, you know, they've been doing this for a long time, they work for nothing, for free. Our parks are something that we should be proud of. I mean, our children, you know, at the very least, you know, their memories as they leave this town are going to be, their sports, their interaction, and the fact that they were competitive and they were proud of their city. I think pride of our parks and soccer fields or something, or some, some of the lasting memories our children will have. A lot of people say, hey, the kids are going to leave, but they'll appreciate it later on. I really want our city to move forward in a way where they can appreciate it, they choose to live here also. That's why I'm an advocate for the growth, the housing element, the fact that we need to attract businesses. I don't think it's totally the code enforcement aspect that the building, the builders don't want to come here. I think it's probably the income, sustainability is probably what it is. I think it's a return on their dollar, so they, they're waiting for the right time where they feel the market's high enough so they can get a return on their investment. So I think that we've been kind of handicapped by the past because of people that chose to live here and not have the opportunity to actually make the money that they had hoped to make one day. You know, we've had businesses close, we had Grifco closed, we had quite a few things close here that were bringing pretty good, higher income jobs where people could actually buy a home and actually live here, and those jobs, there's several of them that have been eliminated. You know, we have the ag community, but if you look at the ag community also, some of the hardest workers on the planet, their incomes are not to a level where they're going to be able to buy a brand-new home up in the bluffs, or Lanesan, or La Peris in the Highlands. You know, some of those jobs are sustainable, as you guys know, there aren't as many jobs that are sustainable here in Long Poke as we'd like them to have for our kids and for our educational opportunities that have been shorthanded through the years. You know, some of the kids, they go to Allen Hancock, they get a two-year education, and I'm sure a lot of them would love to, to stay here, you know? I think that probably our direction should have been a little bit more on the education side, on the entrepreneur, and trust our kids to help guide us to building businesses and, and making this place a better place. So, I just would like to ask that, that we'd put a little bit more of a fast-track. It concerns me that we're back here with a proposal that the City Manager had here, and we're cutting this up without giving a new directive. I think that our path should be given a new directive and be strong at it, instead of coming back and forth, and now we're negotiating over code enforcement, over economic development, and now we're going to allow a few more things to be put in there, when actually, because of the growth element of Long Poke, I think, again, the general plan doesn't support the growth that we need for Long Poke to be sustainable, so I think we need to take another hard look at this. Thank you.
Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, I hear you, Councilmember Vega, and that's what I'm looking at right now. If we can come up with another 110,000, we can have something that they can get through, because it's not our objective to put a staff report together. So we need to come up with the numbers, then we'd go back to them to finalize, verify, and bring up so we could approve it. So, what I, the thing that I put here, along with the 26 pages with the 12 questions and the numbers I'm computing here, half the items here are already items that have been presented to us before us. Some are some of the items that, that we're calculating and figuring out right now between ideas. So, this, this list here, while I'm the one that typed it up, majority of the items on here are already things that have been presented to us as items that are available for you to, for either of us to approve this budget cycle or not to approve. So, just, we're, I think we're getting close to this, and I, and again, it's a hybrid between multiple pages and ideas, but I think right now, we're only $110,000 away, and I had, maybe a couple other questions I could ask.
Well, and I point out one thing that we haven't discussed tonight that was on my original list, was deferring the demolition of the swimming pool building, and that's a savings of $750,000 out of the, out of the two-year cycle, and that resolves a number of issues, and...
If I can, if I can, right, and I'll keep that, but I tip my tongue, two other questions, and this was on one of the pages you'd passed out June 6th, and that was, the two intern positions in PD were 47,000, is that, what, is, are those staffed?
Yeah.
The chiefs?
Yeah, well, I'm just not, we have a couple of, what, maybe what, if you could help me with the, with the question.
Well, what, it was something you had on the list one time... Well, what, it was something you had on the list one time before.
Yes.
It was eliminate two intern positions.
Right. So what's your question?
It's what, the level of importance to, I mean, I know they're all important, but is this something that can be postponed as well or is this?
No, we were proposing cutting those positions, we still can.
And then you had eliminate one part-time generalist. What is, what was the generalist position? Is that what it?
Front desk.
And that's $37,000. It was, you know, two items that were offered to us before, is that?
I'm, I'm not sure, we haven't had a chance to discuss it. I'm not sure that that would be as, the first two are easier to make an adjustment to than eliminating the third one. You're starting to cut into the bone at that point.
No, and that's, I didn't research or ask the chief on those items, that's why I was asking now. But I think, again, bringing back in the pool issue, which I hadn't even put that forward, but I think the pool with the numbers that we have here, you would be able to come back with enough meat and potatoes if I could get two other council members plus to want to move forward with you guys finalizing this and bringing in the $750,000 pool, I think you would have more than enough to give us a balanced budget with the items here. Is that a correct assumption?
And protect positions, yes.
Right. So is that, again, maybe I could?
Well, let's look at it this way. Let's go back over your list again. So those first seven items were $310,000, $360,000, $369,000. $569,000 with $200,000 if we find in overtime reduction and fire.
That wasn't counting the overtime reduction and fire.
Okay, $369,000 then.
But I had the $200,000 in, they eliminate the sales tax initiative. That was $200,000 you had in there.
Yeah, I, for myself, I mean, that's up to you as a majority. I recommend, I would recommend against that. I still believe asking the voters what their pleasure is on that is the way to go. So $369,000. I committed $175,000 on the building division. Or more likely, that's revenue enhancement rather than cuts, but it all counts the same. $544,000. So we're at like $1,730,000 without eliminating the election costs.
I got $1,882. I put?
I hate to interrupt the thought process, but for the rest of us in clarity, so it's not this assumed messaging between the two of you, could you go through what agreed-upon costs you understand you're working on?
Sure. The top seven that we're talking about, that's $369,000, was both mentioned in my presentation, my recommendation, and in Mr. Mosby's. So that was $210,000 of reduced fuel budget, eliminating the human resource campaign, eliminating the bid for Old Town Professional Services, eliminating economic data analysis, reducing internal services, reducing special events, not the big reduction of support of community events, just special events within economic development, and then a reduction of part-time hours in, yeah, within recreation. All of that together is $369,000. Now, the additional numbers we're talking about is the discussion of the demolition of the pool, not that, we're not doing it, but by deferring it, at least out of this budget cycle, we save for this budget cycle the $750,000. We'll have that amount whenever we do get to demolition, demolition time, but for right now, within this two-year cycle, is saying, no, we had planned on it, let's take it out. So now, between the first seven items that we are in agreement on, that's $369,000. If you add $750,000, now we're up to $1,119,000. And so with that, what are these other items so that you can see on, you have a copy of Mr. Mosby's list, right? Was looking at the, that $440,000, from my standpoint, making sure that, in other words, realigning people to different assignments and phasing out assignments. And that would get us up to about $1,556,000. And so I don't know, you were still counting the, holding the library funding, you were counting the $207,000 in your total, Mr. Mosby?
Yes. As well as the $140,000 on the equity adjustments as well.
Right. And that brings us to $1,903,000, which balances the budget. So that's where it is. I've been handed a note saying they believe they can trim $20,000 out of the refuse savings Which would put us at $1,923,000.
I think that has the least amount of impact to move through, would give us a balanced budget. It is a hybrid between multiple questions that have been asked.
Okay, and just in that list I just gave, I did not include any voluntary furlough time.
Mr. Wyman, for my clarification, at one point I had discussed the elimination of the, eliminating the, demolition of the old municipal pool, and you had told me we couldn't use that money because that was going to be a separate bond issue. And now, why are we putting that back in?
Well, we do have a bond issue. We're at one point or another either going to have to return that money or spend it demolishing the pool. What I was saying was, you can't take that money and use it for some other purpose. Our stated purpose in floating the bond was to demolish the pool. I think your question came up at a time, could we take that money and go use it somewhere else, and the answer was no.
Okay. I think it's Councilmember Vega.
Yes, that was my question also, that the money, is it real? It's here in hand? Is it a bond? It's actually for that purpose here? Okay, because I remember we couldn't use it as a...
Yeah, in other words, we borrowed the money and we've, we've scheduled in already our initial debt payment on that bond. So it's, it would be, it's real money, it's...
It's real money, but the debt, the debt payment issue for that real money, do we have an amount on that, what that would be? We're actually just saying, hey, we're going to have a savings, but we don't know what the payment would actually be, right?
No, we've already got the payment and the payment's in the budget, isn't that correct? And we do know it, I don't know if we know it off the top, $169,000.
And how is that paid out, if I could ask here, sir?
General fund.
No, is it a monthly, a yearly payment? What is that?
Probably two times a year.
Twice a year, so that's a couple hundred thousand dollars here and there.
Eighty-four, five, twice a year.
I guess my question to Councilman Mosby, it sounds like in your negotiation here, you sound like you're okay with no movement on the fire marshal as far as integrating that into the existing fire department. And I'm wondering why, and that would be another realized cost savings without a layoff of anybody, it would just basically fill a position that actually is there. And also with economic development because the element is not there with the general plan as far as moving forward, and it's integrated also with the chamber responsibilities. So I'd like to know exactly how everything changed here. Are we there to make a change in direction or are we just negotiating on dollars and cents here? Because it seems like we're really close here, but I'd like to know why those positions aren't as important to add additional savings and we're just stopping at a set number.
Councilmember Mosby, can you, he was asking...
From what I gather, there's a lot larger level of complexity with the fire marshal position, and it is something that is being investigated and worked through. So there's, it's more than just putting it back. I guess we've got cat out of the box, so to say.
I got you.
Just let me make the statement. I haven't, and even though the discussion's been going on, I haven't changed in my position that all of the employee positions and how they are assigned and where they are located and how it's structured within the organization are the purview of the city manager. And I haven't released, I haven't released that, that responsibility to anyone else. So right now, we are, we are doing, we have ongoing, unrelated to the budget, we have ongoing analysis going on as to how do we optimize a number of these assignments, including the fire marshal. The fire, we have a need for a fire marshal, a great need. We have a person who does a good job in that position. And we are looking at how we go about optimizing the use of that position. And I had a quick discussion, I'm giving you all more information than I provided in a quick discussion with Mr. Mosby, but that's what I had summarized to him and I'm sharing with you.
Mr. Wyman, you know, I understand you're the city manager, and I also see that the directive and you're kind of going to be steadfast in your approach and what you want there. And I applaud you for it, but there's also a method to our madness here. I think that along with the changes, and I brought these up to you prior, how we make the building department better and what changes were going to be integrated with the building department is the question that I'm asking because more of the same sometimes is also the same, okay? So I think I've had this discussion with you as far as how we improve, and I haven't really heard much on that, so basically, I'm not sold yet just because you say that we need a fire marshal. We're not, we're not going to get rid of the fire marshal. What we're going to do is actually integrate it within the fire department. So that's a misstatement.
Well, I appreciate that, but we, I appreciate your statements. And I don't mean to seem inflexible on this, but I need to be absolutely clear that when there have been times that the discussion has stepped outside of, there's a clear difference between what your responsibilities are individually and collectively as council members and what my responsibilities are as city manager, whoever else is sitting in this chair, what their responsibilities are as city manager. And those are, it's not merely something we came up with and how we, how we do things. It's contractual. We actually have a contracted agreement so that I can do my job and do my job effectively and that you can do your job and you do it effectively. And so it's more than just that I'm being protective of a position. I am actually holding you to the contract as I hold myself to the contract of what we agreed on and how we would carry out business. And so when you raise concerns and issues with me, I have listened, I do listen, and I've demonstrated to you at times when I've become personally involved with certain issues that go on involving any number of operations across the city, wherever they are. But we, when we start getting anywhere close to start discussing individual positions and personnel issues and doing that in this setting here, it's simply not going to happen. And that, and it can't happen. And so I'm going to hold all of us to the contractual responsibilities that the six of us have. Thanks.
I understand, sir. I also, as a rebuttal here, heard Mr. Panoni that said we were within our responsibilities as oversight policymakers as long as we're here. I think so. The questions need to be asked. You, as a city manager, do you recognize the council as being the policymakers and providing a direction? So if we were to place this as a direction, as a directive, would you follow it? It sounds like you're telling me you wouldn't.
I'm not telling you, I'm not answering that question.
Well, it's a direct question, I'd like an answer for it, sir.
I'm sure you would.
And I want the other council members to note, okay? We're not here to play games, okay? It's not a power struggle, but I expect you guys to kind of get together here on this and give a clear direction here, okay? You see what we're dealing with, this is a big budget item, it's a lot of movement. It's kind of disappointing that we can't come up with a clear directive loud and clear.
I appreciate what Councilmember Mosby's offering in a way to try and find a way not to affect outside entities. I understand the desire not to affect other nonprofits. What I can agree to right now is the idea that we are eliminating general fund positions added in 1517. I would rather look at the furloughs. I would rather look at one-year contract for crossing guards, one year for the chamber. I think, I think there is no reason to fire individuals to solve a budget issue that is beyond our control. If I thought you guys had made a mistake in the prior budget cycle before I got here, I would be screaming along with you that we hired too quickly and we shouldn't have done it. But we have an issue put before us that is causing us to have to realign, and there are other solutions other than solving it on the backs of current employees. So I really have a distaste for eliminating positions that you hired and discussing it publicly as a directive. Secondly, I really don't want to see the library lose funding when, again, quality of life, service to our community, the low income, the usage that we've seen increase, that, losing that. So I'd much rather find that $600,000 or so from somewhere else. Again, there are already things staff is looking at to eliminate, and I don't think that's the place to go. I think going back to voluntary furloughs, looking at 980s and city hall closures, something that doesn't say we're losing staff that were appropriate for the policies and council mandates that are still existing. We haven't changed those mandates. We still expect business incentives, we still housing incentives, we still expect the transparency, we still expect us to push... we still expect us to push concepts forward and inform the public about what's going on. And eliminating positions you hired in the last cycle means those will not happen. There's already things not happening because everybody's in a limbo waiting to see if they're fired. And I know you say there's 30-some-odd positions and we'll transition them, but some of these positions had very specific roles they were hired for. And so I would much rather see what those positions are we aren't hiring in and make sure that we don't hire to maintain the positions we did hire. And that's where we don't fill the blanks. I just don't think it's the morale, the message it sends to our community, it's an unfortunate message to be sending them that we aren't giving them the chance to have the discussion about better ways to solve this and not just have revenue to maintain the services, but increase the services by having a sales tax on the ballot. So I agree with most of it, I disagree with the 440 and the library funds going missing.
Councilman Mosby?
Yeah, we actually took the 440 out on the people as part of the, that was a couple steps ago, but I think what we have is, if you look at the first, first seven or 369,000, the library, which you said you didn't, but we're holding it at the number they are, not expanding, from what the 15, current 1517s, that's 207. We have a movement of 175,000 in the building department, postpone the equity adjustments, voluntary furloughs, not the closure of city hall, that's about 220,000. That puts us at 1.11. The pool, as it was brought back, as Mr. Wyman said, was 750. That puts us at 1.86. And we just heard we had another 20 grand from solid waste at parks, it looked like, so that's 1.88. So those numbers right there, so you have the minimalist of effects to city employees here. Granted, there's a library movement, but, and again, my logic with that is because we did such an advancement in the last budget cycle, let us catch up. And that's why I'm saying with the 27. Now, mind you, the county has chipped in a chunk of money that can help offset us not increasing. So I think, and I'm not sure what exactly that number is, but that gives us there, I think with the minimalist of damage, it gives us a 1.88 number, and I think we need 1.86. Is that what we were looking for, or eight?
1866.
So that would get us at 1.881. It doesn't have that 440 that you're talking about in there, so I think that gives us the minimalist of damage to employees and... I don't know if you guys want to keep talking about it, but I would make a motion that we push forward for finalization with these numbers and bring it back, I think we could probably bring it back at the next council meeting to finalize that by the end of this month. If there's any more discussion wants to move forward with that, but that gives us 1.88 million, would give us a balanced budget.
If you could hold off on that, we haven't had public comment yet, so... Yes, Councilman Osborne.
City managers, is that the clarity you have on that 440? Because that's not the clarity I had on it. So I just want to make sure that's the way you're understanding it, because that's not the way I understood it.
Okay. Right now, to get to the 188, right, we, I'm sorry, your 18.88, Mr. Mosby, included the 440, correct? It did not. Then it did include the furlough. And then I just need to see where else I'm... Voluntary furloughs, that's where I was missing. Yeah, I agree with his, it avoids the 440.
Thank you for the clarity.
Okay, and just for the record, I'd like to support Mr. Wyman and his refusal to answer the question. No disrespect to you, Councilmember Vega, it's, you know, we're just, we're formed similar to the federal government where we have three branches of government, and we are in one of the branches, he's in another branch, and just like in the federal government, there's not a mix of responsibilities there, mixing of responsibilities. We each have our own sub-responsibilities. His responsibility, he's absolutely responsible for, and he is held accountable for it, just like we are responsible and we're held accountable for ours. So I'm going to say that I respect him in his decision not to answer that question, so... Okay, public comment. You've been waiting a long time, you better have some.
My name is Molly Gerald. I just have a few comments to make about the library. Appreciate the comments in a supportive way that have been made. I want to speak on behalf of funding and to mention my three types of connections that bring me here tonight. As a library commissioner, I attend monthly meetings, and I'm aware of the big picture value of the library to this community and the contributions the staff members provide. As a homebound patron volunteer, I visit the library several times a week to serve homebound residents who cannot come to the library themselves. Currently, I serve four homebound residents. At different times, I've had up to 10. But this is a great way to stay aware that even though this is a small number of people, the library is their lifeline. And that's just the people that I'm aware of and serve, but not only those who rely on homebound delivery. Individual lives are enriched by the library, and this is multiplied to increase the quality of life for our entire community. My third aspect is my own family's lifelong education and enjoyment of the library as a frequent user. This is a great way for me to be aware that the parking lot is often completely full, families are gathering up materials to take home, people are working on computers for job searches to connect with family and friends, and in the teen and children's area to interact with each other as they explore online. Our public spaces bring people together. With internet access, there have been people who say that the library's longer, no longer needed because many people have computers at home. But that's like saying we don't need our parks because a lot of people have a backyard. Our public spaces do bring people together, and they work well when they are adequately staffed to make them work well. The library became a fully integrated city department in 2015. With this came funding for adequate staffing that has re-energized library programs, outreach and services. Please allow the dedicated staff who were hired full-time rather than working for years at a classification of part-time temporary without benefits, to keep their full-time positions, providing a great service to Long Polk. Our city gets a great return on investment as the responses to item five in the 12-point document make clear. Throughout the budget process, Councilmember Mosby and others have stated that you don't want to diminish the quality of life for Long Polk residents. The library staff daily interfaces with people from all walks of life, and we just ask you to let that continue. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please. Okay, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. What is our desire? Councilman Mosby?
I'd be willing to make that motion to move forward, as I stated there, putting the numbers together that come up to 1.88 million dollar, which would give us a balanced budget. I can go back and cite him or the city manager can assist me with that. And we could come back and bring that back, I believe we can bring it back at the next meeting to finalize it.
The next regular meeting, right?
The next regular?
September 5th?
Right.
So that's coming forward, and they had now with the city manager, seeing the notes that I put there, and, I mean, of course, granted it...
Right, yeah. No, I got the same number you did.
Okay. So put a motion on the table to move forward with that as a balanced budget?
I'd like to put it on the agenda for the 5th, I mean, provided it's balanced, and then we could vote from then. That be what we need to do, is instead of a motion, could we just go ahead and have three concur?
Either way, I think.
I think the motion was to bring it back for the agenda on September 5th to be considered or adopted.
I just wanted to be real clear. I'll go ahead and give a second on that then, thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any more of the discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 3-2. Okay, I think... Read my notes here. Okay, we are done. This brings us to adjournment. Our next regularly scheduled...
Excuse, is it, Mr. Mayor? Would I be allowed to make a request?
Sure, go ahead.
And the reason why I come forward with this now is because it's an item that we had discussed back at a council meeting, April 5th, 2016. And this was about item number seven, and this was the discussion of Resolution 435-1, parentheses 94. And we agreed, as per the minutes, we agreed with general consensus to bring back the item for further discussion during the next budget cycle.
And what is that item?
That is about the economic uncertainty policy that we had. And what I'm asking at this time is that we have a motion, that I make a motion to have the legal department analyze that the city has violated its own policies and/or state law relating to reserve, namely Resolution 435-1, parentheses 94, 5902, parentheses 14, 5913, parentheses 14. Those are resolutions that I presented a couple meetings ago, reviewing the staff reports from March 25th, 2014, May 6th, 2014, council meetings from February 21st, 2017, and April 5th, 2016, as line analyzing minutes, staff reports and video, as well as the fund balance policy adopted November 1st, 2001, and other related documents. So it's a motion that I'd like to see where we are. In order to fix something, we need to recognize that there is an issue. I brought it up several times, we haven't seen that it is, but I would like to go to this next level of analysis. And I'd need a second and a third for something, I guess.
That was quite a motion. If there's something that's wrong or needs to be fixed, absolutely, I would give a second on it. I think I'm clear on what you're asking for, though, is that we want to retain our emergency fund.
I'm not clear on what you're asking, I'm sorry. You're going to have to...
What I'm asking is for the legal department to analyze if the city has violated its policies in relating to those three resolutions and to our reserve fund policy. That's not up for us to say we're doing it wrong. I believe the legal department has the proper authority to determine if we are doing something wrong.
So, just so I'm clear, you're asking the city attorney's department to determine whether any of those resolutions that you mentioned have been violated?
Are we breaking our rules? Correct.
Okay. And are you asking for a report, a written report to come back to the council?
Yes.
Okay. Can I ask for at least a month for that to happen?
Yes.
Okay. Clear.
I only have a second anyways, so...
What would that date be?
I'm fine with any council meeting around a month from now.
I'll give you a third on that one. Okay. Anything else? Okay, this meeting is adjourned to our regular city council meeting of September 5th. Good night and thank you.